Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. We have called this special budget work session on order. And Doug, will you lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's too good.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer is absent. Commissioner O'Rourke.
Glad to be here.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Elguir. Commissioner Launer.
Present, and glad everybody's happy to be here.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kramer.
And I am here to save the day.
Like, I'm talking to America here.
You're retarded, Sid. Okay. We do have an agenda in front of us. It's a budget work session. Looking for approval of the agenda or suggestions to add anything?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved, seven zero. This time, we do have a public comment. And thank you all for coming. If you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand and we'll call on you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. There will be more public comment at the end of the meeting. And then we'll have public comment tonight for a special hearing at 6:30. And then we'll have public comment at our 7 o'clock meeting. Thank you for coming. Any Commissioner comment? Thank you. Well, Sean's going to lead us through a budget work session. Thank you, Sean. And Kathy.
So I think we were intentionally flexible, I guess, with the agenda in terms of what's next. I think there were a couple of things I wanted to clean up from the last meeting we had. So if I could just really repeat it, that the very first thing, hopefully in your stack, was a thing that had a prosecuting attorney petter on it. And I think Commissioner Rexroth, if you go back here, you asked a question of Joe Hubbell when he was up regarding the Suckell or Arbo. We were talking about technical services and what that meant with future budgets. And so he was referring to a line item. And I just wanted to close the loop and to ask, what would be the impact of that line item as we went forward, even though that forward is three years out? They show, if you go back to, if you had interest in the prosecuting attorney's narrative, they call out in their 801 contractual services account a piece of that for technical services related to prosecuting attorneys that wish to get technical services. We pay $1,796 around that. There are avoided costs there in the future, but it's only around $750. And so when we get to 2027 with the new services that they talked about, that number, he was giving a range, I think, when we talked, we looked at that. They had a meeting sense and it's $10,150. So that's where that would go into the future.
Thank you.
The second item, Commissioner Wessel, this kind of gets to one of the questions you asked either last time or maybe it may have been two sessions ago, now I honestly forget. But I was calling it kind of a risks and opportunities summary. And so I recast in those three pages that I set on your desk, 2024 budget position status. And if you trust me on this one, we could reconcile. But what I did was with the numbers over on the left, I don't intend, or I was trying to stay away from moving to a different list. But given that, as we hear additional departments speak each time, I left the cross-reference to the left. For example, the second line down, Board of Commissioners, we had no tableways on that one. As we talked about that in the first session, the share items 44 and 33. Those 44 and 33 tie to your five-page list. But what I was trying to do is resort these based on things that we discussed. And I think, Commissioner Wessel, this goes back to your question around, as we talked with Cameron and the Childcare Fund 292. I want to see the impact of a 75% state share as opposed to a 50%. So what I'm trying to do is build kind of a running list of what you've heard from, what we've collectively discussed. Not implying that any decisions have been made with this, but kind of a running tally of where we've been, as well as some of the things we have discussed are quasi-committed or they're out there in the future, like broadband and returning districts. But then I think we could use this, or I propose we use this, to stay on the same page today if we proceed. I think the item that we said we would focus most on is to give a chance to run through the staffing level requests that we've been around the edge on as we talk through some of the departments that have come forward, which is on the second page. So that's what that document's intended to do. If it's helpful, I can refer to it. There's no issue going back to the original one, however. I use that as my own personal roadmap. I think the other thing that I wanted to do, and we mentioned it in the department head meeting last week with the administrator, is I don't want to say it was random. It was a thoughtful walk of trying to get some department heads in front of you that were starting in my mind with some of the more complex items and working our way down. I had asked Amber if she would join us today. She's one of the ones that we have not gotten to, that I didn't want to skip or diminish. So if you're okay with that, I thought we could start with a quick walkthrough. In Amber's, there's one or two items that I know have been on the list that I've maintained that I've been asked to make sure that's based on the list for discussion. So if that makes sense, and then we could dive into the staffing levels. Amber, do you want to come in? So just by way of context, but remember that building safety, so we're talking about a separate fund, 542. And so the nature of this enterprise fund is she's got both revenues and expenditures in there. So the uniqueness of that, I think we should go through any of those items.
The big ongoing debate in our office is vehicles. You guys all know, we're still waiting on two vehicles that I received approval for purchased last year. They are not even production. And as we all know, there is now a union strike. So I have reached out to my contact at the dealership to see if he has any updates. Last, my contact is live. I handed out because I'm going to receive any kind of update. But that's an ongoing expense that I've been discussing with Sean. Changed some numbers in here as far as consultation. Usually, we don't see much in that expense account. But with the Traverse City whiskey project making forward and received approval for compensation expenses, it's a, I said, my team went through that review process. So I'm just asking to roll that coming forward. Not sure when that second phase of the project is going to move forward, but I'd like to have everything there for when we are ready to go forward.
Can we take a minute, yeah, find a page?
Special funds, the tab special funds. Page 57 of the. And what project was that? Special funds is the name of the tab. It's. It's covered from the back.
57 of 80?
57 of 80 is.
But you named the project, and I missed what it was.
Regarding the Traverse City whiskey company, but specifically talking about the expense account I have, whiskey. Yes.
Amber's talking about. 801, which is on page 15, right on the middle. Is the comparison.
So you're looking to contract some help for the TC whiskey?
Yeah, for review. I have three companies already signed on as consultants. The mechanical consultant. He reviews that his fund already, pulled him in on his initial phase for review. So that expense may increase depending on the complexity of the project. Not having any plans to review. Everybody has different hours to find out if you're pulling them in the meetings with the developer as well.
Do you have flexibility, Amber, to adjust your plan review fees to cover our expenses?
Yes.
So do you think that that flexibility will capture most of what your risk you're mentioning there is?
That's my intention.
Okay.
The only other item that's kind of new is my capital outlay, which is account 970. I've added funds to the possible purchase of office chairs. Office chairs were discussed in the Building and Grounds Committee last year as a project to be funded for the entire county. Chairs haven't been replaced in the building since 2008. My staff is asking me to pursue the possibility of us being able to move forward with that project, even if the county as a whole kind of wants to put that on the back burner for the time being, given that we're self-funded and we will eventually be paying for those, excuse me, chairs ourselves. Our funds, so I threw that number in there at the high end. To my knowledge, there are no chairs before the chair committee for review. So I'm just throwing a high-end number in there to see if that is going to be discussed.
What was your capital outlay for 23? Is that your, that would be your trucks? Was that the pickup trucks?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. So hopefully those will be paid for in 2023 in that.
I think that's the question. And so we have, I think our practice is getting correct in the near term, but in the past, I believe those were approved through the board. But we're in the period of the year of Amber's point where we don't have confidence in this production year that that's going to occur. And so the timing is a challenge. And so when the budget, when the dollars are spent, when it's felt in the budget, I think there's a question of, there's a risk within this fund relative to those two vehicles. If that makes sense?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And you're not seeing those vehicles on the horizon?
I haven't heard anything. The last communication I had with the dealership was in July. He told me the bin numbers had not even been assigned to the vehicles. So they weren't even on the horizon for production.
So you can hold that money?
That's.
That allocation?
The dollar amount he gave me for what it was going to cost for those.
And we can carry that over?
So, correct me with the rules, but the, I believe from an approval standpoint, that carries over the dollars right now are, would be the question within that fund, whether we reflect it or not. I think the other thing, so back up, I probably didn't spend enough time on this one. The uniqueness of Amber's budget starts on the revenue side, in my mind, given the number of line items of revenue that she has. So we pulled yesterday, thinking Amber from the day before. The fund balance in 542 is a million one, just over a million one. Like, it's a self-sustaining, intended to be a self-sustaining quote-unquote fund from that perspective. And so the questions about revenue, Commissioner Rexroth, I think are appropriate. Where you have dollars here that we don't have in some of the other areas.
Have we ever done that? That since you're self-funding, you can, I'd want to do the same thing. If I was self-funded, I'd want to say, I've got the money for chairs. But do we do that?
Chairs typically are done through a mass hole or certain departments have replaced a couple of chairs. But yeah, typically, it would come to Buildings and Grounds Committee. And then they would select the chair and the colors and fabrics and everything for everybody to get replaced.
And that's what I thought. And has anybody ever gone out and bought chairs out of their own extra funds?
Well, out of like, out of the general fund, you have a couple of departments that purchased chairs. There is a chair committee that Laurel was, that put together. But I wasn't part of the committee, so I'm not sure where it's at. The committee never met. Something we should look at, especially when it comes to the fabrics and styles.
We have a lot of those committees.
Buildings and Grounds? Would you maybe have a chair? Did you bring back your proposal, perhaps? Is that with them, Mr. Chairman?
So would you want to see that taken out of her budget? Since it would be, or do you want her, do you want to wait until it gets closer?
You've got it in for 24.
She has it in for 24 for $18,000.
Yeah, I would leave it in, but whatever you all think. For now, I would leave it in.
Okay.
It's probably, it's 18 chairs, if I remember from the narrative. Unlikely to be $1,000 each, or there'd probably be board questions. But I mean, I think it's not going to get spent to that extent anyway.
No, in our department, we have eight staff members that use the chair daily. So those are the ones I'm looking to upgrade. We have conference room and apartment workstations. So they don't even have to all be the same. If the committee wanted to explore options for chairs that are used on a lesser daily basis or something more cost-effective, total open to that, just looking to prioritize some of them.
Is the staff saying the ones they sit in every single day are uncomfortable?
Yeah. Most of the cycle through what we had in the conference room initially are now being used on day-to-day basis. The ones that we started with in 2008 are broken and done.
Well, I'm all for people having ergonomically comfortable chairs. But the other chairs, if we're tight on money, just to get nice conference room chairs.
Doesn't have to be, not looking for anything fancy. We use that room for pre-construction meetings, staff meetings occasionally. It doesn't have to be top of the line. Just a quiet and pleasant part of time.
Yeah, I'm always for people being healthy, but.
So what do you need today from us? What are you looking for, Sean?
I think just awareness of the items. So to the extent there have been capital expenditures, we put those all to the side. I honestly left the, what Amber had requested in the budget for the first go-around, given the unique nature of the fund. So I think it's just awareness item of the master. I think to Amber's point, my review of the line items, she covered the only two material changes we go through here. Any other questions?
What kind of problem do we have if you still don't have your cars next year at this time?
It will become a problem. What I would have to do most likely is outright purchase or lease another shared vehicle. Because before you guys recently, and I do have one of our vehicles swapped out, and I'm releasing now. If it's going to become long-term, I want to discuss outright purchasing it and then doing the same for a secondary vehicle. I can't have a situation where all of a sudden that thing completely dies and I'll have inspectors piggybacking. That's going to drastically reduce productivity for the project.
So what kind of flexibility? I mean, are we bound to go through purchasing? And I just had a truck fail Monday in a following one in Indiana. It'll be here Tuesday. What options do we have to take care of this? I mean, they're just like standard cab pickups, right?
Yeah.
They're probably out there somewhere.
The guys come to me every other day. Hey, there's a vehicle here, and it's online. So I don't know what the purchasing policies and powers are. And I obviously want to buy by those rules and regulations.
Specifically where we went, if I'm correct, we purchased the.
Those trucks are at state bid. Yeah, you can buy a truck, but you will pay a lot more than the price we gave.
Lot more, and $10,000 probably, at least.
At least.
You got to go through the state bid.
We will not get a better price, but you're going to have to wait.
Yeah.
We just got our new Ford. How long did it take for the marine vehicle?
Not likely to get any better under the current labor negotiation situation with the UAW.
We've got one more coming that's still not here.
Yeah, this is, I mean, you pay more, I get that. But if you start putting $5,000 up every other month into repairs, into a dead horse, stranded costs do.
Well, not to that stage. The remaining vehicle is still looking in good condition. It's just trying to be proactive and.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Your department has leased before out of Benzenevstein, I think is what they used. It was a Stevie that, yeah. And it was a leased purchase. Just not, I mean, just for historical. No, it was actually the, it was the Explorer. You're using an Escape, right? Or you were?
We were.
It was the Escape that he had before instead of these trucks. They were cars, they weren't new builds. No, at one point, you did a Pontiac Vibe. But it was not for construction. It was probation officers. Childcare.
So I see, and we're probably going to see this throughout the budget, but I see your gas and oil went up 50% in 2022. So you just went up another thousand. Well, you kind of left it the same as 2022. Paid for that. So $16,000, you think that's going to be enough? You see, are you seeing an increase in your permitting?
From last year, or do you think it'll be about the same?
It's been about the same. And when I threw that number in there, I was comparing where it was today with the values too. So more than once, it's changed that point, the best was up.
Sean?
Go ahead.
I just, on page 59, 999, operating transout indirect cost. I just, I have no idea what you mean by that, absolutely not.
That is where the cost allocations flow through every week? Is that right?
It's a cost allocation, yeah. It's a cost allocation plan provided by a company called MGT. So after each audit, we send all of our transactions to them. And they put forth a contract and that we use for state, to recognize state revenue that comes back in. But probably, I was trying to think, remember, I told you that 11 or 12 years ago, recycling used to do a flat amount of $15,000 that the 230 fund would send back to the general fund in regards to the fact that that fund shares Trudy and the staff underneath it. So it was a flat amount. Then it came to the fund balance within senior services. And the direction of that budget session for that year went to, why aren't we using this cost allocation plan that which shows us how much is utilized between the general fund services? So for instance, the MMRA insurance, you do not charge that to each department or each fund. The general fund pays it. And so this cost allocation plan takes our legal counsel, the MMRA, our workers' comp, and it kind of spreads it all over in this plan. So the ones that we utilize it for revenue is, in essence, any invoices, any payroll, because she doesn't have her own checking account and system, as well as treasury, all as part of this indirect. So it's the 542, it's the 281, senior services, 230, recycling, as well as the CPL fund and the automation fund. There's five or six that this cost allocation plan, they go through and they basically generate the figures. And we say, okay, of your budget, this much comes back to the general fund, you know, spread out through all of the funds. And I know that Sean just gave that to you. So this chart of accounts that you laid in front of you, basically everything on the first page, which here is general fund, these, some of these funds on the back are going to pay, in essence, these back. So treasury, clerk, board of commissioners, insurances, those types of things, where she doesn't get her own bill. So it's part of this indirect cost as well.
What would be a better way to say, maybe we need to clean up our words.
Well, this says indirect.
Yeah. Because I think if you, to your question, and I think in all of the funds, you see the ones you refer to as true allocations are things like 850 telephone, computer charges, 941, coffee machine charges, 942, buildings and grounds, 943. Those are allocations of those big bundles of cost that are probably more self-explanatory. But what Jen's kind of describing, if indirect cost is a better way to kind of say it, it's everything that you think that we provide central management or central support through government that gets allocated through there. And so the process is, we haven't run into MGT yet. They are the service provider of pulling that information together. We just literally this week gave them information to provide that for 2023. But it's based on year-end 2022 data to be applied to 2024 financials. So if you think about it that way, it's almost like you get a two-year.
Yeah, 2025 financials. So this work that you're looking at now, that we're budgeting for 2024, is 21's end of year. So if you take the audit and we send them all the information to the audit, they process this plan. And then the plan that they're going to deliver to them for signature before November 1st, you're not going to see that until you're budgeting your 2025. So it's like two years behind.
So we pay for that service?
We pay for that, yep. They take all of our, oh, thousands of transactions and they compile it and then they break it down. And then we have to have this formal approval and it's sent to the state that we're in compliance so that we can have state grants. Correct, John? Yeah.
And the one report we sent this week was almost 4,000 pages long.
Every time it touches the general ledger, every time you touch it, that's what they get sent. And then they, like I said, they mass collect it, put it in its buckets, and then it's delineated.
I think when I started to understand how as Amber said, you put your bank deposits together in your office, but she walks it down the hall to the treasurer's office. They're funded by general fund. They touch it, they do stuff with it, they, you know, they do their job. Her timesheets come to finance and accounting and the administrators' office. So we touch it, we're funded by the general fund. So this is her department that has her own revenue paying for those general fund services.
And they even, I think they even count how many transactions. Oh, yes. It's all right down to the number of times, of the number of documents.
So I assume they don't make any adjustments for inflation from the 2021 data. So what we're looking at is probably low.
10%.
I mean, at least. I mean, yeah.
Right. It's always going to be two years behind.
Amber, I have a question, and I know you're self-funded and pay by fees. But how's your staffing level? How do you see our building starts up? Or are they beginning to go down? And what are the pressures on your department?
I think the building so far for our area is kind of weak. A little bit of a niche here for residential construction. It's been pretty steady.
here for residential construction. It's been pretty steady. Interesting, we're not seeing a little bit more of an uptick in commercial, I would say, this year than than usual. I would say that where we're at staffing wise is probably perfect. Depending on how things were to change in the industry, there could be a need for someone that maybe exclusively did building plan review. So I'd have a staffer that didn't leave the office, who just did the favorite work. So right now, I think we're doing pretty well and splitting the duties between the two buildings, but I give it myself.
I just want to give kudos to Amber and her team. I know that we mentioned earlier the TC Whiskey Construction, and that is a very unique scenario for Michigan. There is no other similar facility that has the structural or the building and zone issues that this facility has. So we have no model and no codes or specific, specific codes that address this sort of thing in Michigan. And so that has been the impetus why there's been a little bit more need for consultants on this project. And they were smart enough to know, you know, that, hey, we need a little bit more guidance on this. And so I think they've done a great job. There's been an effort to really work toward coming to a resolution and an amiable agreement. And I think we're very, very close to that. And it could have gone a lot of different directions, but the team did a great job.
Anything else for Amber?
Well, we may be able to, we may be able to lease you out to other counties if they get this big of a project. They're going to be pro once you did that. I did want to pull my head here. Yeah, okay.
I think if you're on page 57, the middle of the page, the 23th year revenue figures, these were as a change area. So the half note we're saying this morning, changed the 217,000 to 328,000.
Wow.
You can look at the 86,9, changed it to about 130,000. For 96?
For 86, we're changing 86 to.
130,000. Here to date revenue.
Wow, uh huh, yeah.
And her mechanical permits for, and from June to now are 137,000, 137,000. And her plumbing permits were at 43, but they're 64. So there's quite a bit more revenue. They're probably going to push their revenue figures.
Yeah. So how often, Amber, do you look at those and decide you can roll those permit fees back even just a little bit? Because I know they're, they're high. You know, if somebody's building a house, they're getting, you know, $500 permit here and a $500 permit there. And I know they're high.
They're high, but if you look at surrounding patties, we're actually low, we're less than what others charge.
So suppose we are more efficient. Can you ever roll those back, just even regardless? Do you look at those?
Given the expense trend that I've noticed, I'd be extremely hesitant.
Especially in gasoline, yeah, I get that. I do want to remind you to, on those trucks, make sure you change those aluminum wheels we ordered to steel wheel rims. Those aluminum ones leak and they're not good. Just steel will be better for you. And I think they're cheaper, might help.
Anything else? Thank you, Amber.
Keep up the good work.
And as soon as they have hybrid trucks, that's a way to cut our debt.
Oh, gosh.
She's great T-shirt.
Do you like them? I don't, I wouldn't want to replace a battery at $27,000.
You don't do that.
You guys are hysterical. I think they do.
I took it personally the last time here. I think I heard the comment that we haven't even talked about the hard stuff yet. So my intention was to try to get to the hard stuff. Open to the direction, I think the challenge at some point from my perspective is, I've been trying to provide supplemental information. Hopefully it's been helpful. On some of the remaining issues, I believe they're more just, it's a, I think the topics are fairly well-known, they've discussed in multiple meetings. If I could help her with information, happy to go there. But I was going to tee up the discussion on staffing levels if that was appropriate, and I can frame it just a little bit. But beyond that, some of the bigger items are also on that same page. Where I'm going, and let me, you're kind of just spend a second to get there, is a little bit of a trip down where we've been. But on the page that I handed out today, it's called 2024 Budget Position Status. I think when we started off back in August, which was on the June data that we've been working with since then, we talked about a general fund impact or a draw in effect with what's in that proposed budget of $965,000. I've collected items down the page, both opportunities and risks that I've heard in the various discussions. And so, for example, with the sheriff, we have, the suggestion was, what's the price of the fourth vehicle? Remember, we had three, what I quote, in the initial budget on a five vehicle ask. And so I put a placeholder out there for $45,000. We heard from Lieutenant Roush, I believe, with the jail and the dishwasher item, of capture. We talked to Karen on the childcare fund. There were a number of items that were moving there, but the context of why some big opportunities got back to the movement, his general direction to move staffing and expenditures around between funds with an intention of being more of optimizing what we're able to capture under the state grant. That, that first step showed an opportunity with $173,000 in that line item, was, was the movement between funds. There was some slight shuffle with expenditures and opportunities that offset. But then the big item below was Commissioner Westle's ask. What if he showed that with 75% state share? And so without any other changes, which I think they, Amber had a concern with, I did the math behind it, which was simply change the 50 to 75, and what's that mean? Which is like $168,000 if I did that right. Some of the other items that we've gone down the list, so we had the recorder in emergency services, 911 consoles in emergency services, elections, Michelle was going to be about things involved with the elections next year between office supply, publishing, printing, and the need for that that we talked about. I put them on the list just so we didn't lose them as a placeholder. Same thing with the court, reporting devices, which are those two $19,500 items. And so that's kind of been my running list. I wanted to be transparent with it and share with you what I caught. If I missed something, or if you think I misrepresented, I'm really open to film that and capturing that appropriately. They're committed amounts, we talked about this with the treasurer. I put placeholders out there related to the remaining, the broadband that has been committed to under the $5 million agreement that we are funding. And so we know there's a couple of million and eight gap. I know that there are drains out there. As of this morning, Kathy helped us pull together what's the county share of the known drains that are, that have been on Safety Net's list. That's $100,000. And I put those out there just as a reference point. But I think where I would suggest we got to be put that age, if there's no questions on that, or ask, are there questions on that?
Yeah, the broadband is not complete. Not a complete number, because we still have the rest of the county to do.
So down, again, I promise you I will not lose that one when on the third page.
I don't want to complete a list without having it on.
It's not, it is on the list. So it is on specific items not yet discussed at the very top of the third page with the TBD, because I don't know what that is yet. So
First one.
Right top of the page.
Okay, thank you.
And on that issue, I did receive a call today from Chris and Patricia from, on their project. And they were looking at one of our future budget dates to come in with the quotes and prices from Charter for the rest of the county. So I think we'll have that. It's a real number.
You really want to, you worked out the verbiage to tell them that it doesn't matter?
Did I miss?
No, this was not constructive.
She's lobbying for to be determined.
Should I have put it on the first?
Yeah, probably.
Yes, you got it. Thank you.
Motion.
Hey, listen, I got another email this morning.
So absent that miss, if we look to the second page, I think these are, at the top of that second page, what I tried to do just to be more logical in terms of grouping, I called them all county facility considerations. Because I think they're guaranteed everybody's heart and should be recognizable, and you didn't want to lose those. We can certainly take a trip through those. I think we've touched on a lot of them already. But I think the focus, I was going to direct this down to staffing levels, because on the second part of the second page, these are the ones, the ones that are not shaded. Each of the department heads has spoken to as they've discussed. The ones in the gray are the ones we have not discussed, and where I would suggest we need to probably rattle through them. The one that I will apologize for, I can't do this to be fair to Judge Kramkowski. She had a family issue today and was, wanted to be here and was not. So the probate one, which I know we've all discussed in the board meeting, but I want to make sure she has her opportunity to discuss that. But the rest are related to the administrator, I believe. And so I don't know if they're good to you.
Sure.
If you want to roll through some of those.
Most of these have all come before the board at some point. The ones in red have not. And the last one is not. So to kind of give you a thought process on where this is, kind of where these thoughts are. So the IT director role, I think everyone knows that we right now have a IT technician. That's the only staff person we have, and that person is doing everything from ordering to assessments, cybersecurity, the reporting over with the jail, all of the duties that were previously maintained by the director. And I think that she's doing an amazing job, and I think it would behoove us all to support that position as an IT director. The other parts of that responsibility that would be moved up is, you know, the management of budget process, as again, she's ordering, she's tracking a lot of these things. So I think that the job warrants, the job that's being done warrants the title and.
So I have a question on that, because my understanding goes through some history on that is, after our previous director left, we negotiated a contract with a consultant that was substantially higher than before, with the idea that we did not need an IT director.
Correct.
That's my understanding of the history of that. So while I do not oppose the idea of this, it does seem then that we need to revisit the contract with our consultant. I mean, because that's my understanding of the history of that, because I asked about it to some other previous commissioners who were here at that time. So.
I think that's a fair statement, that that contract needs to be reviewed. There are some major projects that Safety Net assisted with in terms of the upgrading and the decommissioning of servers. So some of those big things have been done. I think that we have an opportunity. We've talked with Raymond that has a division that is a technology and cybersecurity division. They want to do an analysis. Of course, they're trying to sell a product. But you heard it during our, you heard it during our assessment, you know, with Raymond, that one of the key things that we need to be looking at is technology and, and security and those types of things. So I think from that perspective, there's an opportunity to do that. I'm not sure that that's necessary. However, I do think that there's definitely an assessment that needs to be done in terms of Safety Net, and if we're getting the value that was originally initiated. From the standpoint, they were supposed to have staff incorporated with Safety Net, seeing somebody here on site. We've not seen that happen. So there's definitely, you know, there's not the level of support, staffing support that was initiated through that agreement.
Then I could only support that if the offsetting costs were actually negotiated. I mean, we talk about that stuff, we just need to do it.
Wish you luck.
Doug beat me to some of my comments, so I'm not going to expand on them. I think he's absolutely right. We do have to look into that. The other half of that is, and I did have a request of outside from the public, that that go re-out-for, out-forbid as a director, because we hired that position as a technician, so we had technicians apply. We didn't have directors apply for that position. So if we are, if we look at that data and we determine, we can renegotiate this thing at Safety Net, if I remember right, contract, and we go to a director position, we really ought to put that out for bid. And, and probably, more likely, our technician would, would rise to the top, but we don't, we don't know that. One?
I'd like to speak to just the opposite of that, because I have, I know when Ron was here, and we've become a whole lot more sophisticated than Ron was here, and a lot more focused on, on distant stuff and, and security. Our current technician is the first one called whenever we have a problem, and I have yet to hear that she hasn't been able to deliver. And we do know, we do know her work ethic, we know what her skills are. So I would, I would not want to do that. I think we ought to look at what's Doug saying, but I would not want to personally risk losing her. She is, if you were going to design a director position, you'd design it around her, I think. She's got talents.
I agree, because she is our employee. If, if, if we are going to make that into a director, it should be her. My, my point is that.
That's a real kick in the whatever to an employee.
We have IT specialists in the county that did not apply for this position because the position was technician. That's all I'm saying. So if we are going to now make that position a director, as I said in the end of my last statement, she will probably rise to the top and probably be that person. But we haven't allowed others to apply for the, for that as a director. And, and we all know, it is, it's, they're firecrackers in what they do, and they're out there, and more and more of them all the time. There is no question, I'm not saying she doesn't do excellent work. That's not, that's not the point. But do we just take a person and then just change everything and make them a director without allowing the, our, our general public and all our residents to apply for that position?
That's, you operate to your own employee first. I will say, we have multiple letters of recommendation from the sheriff's office, from Safety Net, as well as through 911, in support of, of this position, which, when I brought it to the board before, it was, it was tabled, so we never got a chance to share that with you all. But I suppose certainly we could engage, you know, human resources to start that process once the board, I mean, in terms of, you know.
We'd have to take a vote on that. I think if our employees knew that we'd put all their positions out to bid just because, there goes your loyalty.
Well, typically, the board doesn't get involved in, in hiring. We can make recommendations, but we approve the position.
Yes.
And then our administrator and our HR people do the, do the search and the filling. I think we ought to take some pride if we have an opportunity to promote from within, because it's an opportunity. But I interrupted Commissioner Warren.
I think I have the least computer skills here, and I will admit that probably. But I do open them, I look at them. I've received emails from Leland County with the county seal on it, which was spam, okay? I call up, she's there, she handles it. I would hate to be an IT technician and the county hires someone above me to direct me, because now you've got problems. She's doing the job, she's doing the job very well. You know, and what I learned from the airport is you cannot put enough in IT security. You know, I mean, MGM paid $15 million last week as a ransom because they got hacked. So, you know, I think she's doing the job. I, I don't know her personally, but I know when I call, I get somebody to talk to on the end of the phone. somebody to talk to on the end of the phone.
Can I add something, Doug? Yeah, so the difference in her position and the director's position is 68, 93?
Correct.
Or 68, 30?
Those are fully burdened.
We could talk about that much, if it's consistent on all, but-
Yeah, you mean 6,800.
What's that?
6,800.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So is there, what, what do we need to do at the board then, to move this forward?
We can recommend.
So, can I ask a question? Have we ever done this before? I'm trying to think of any time we ever took a position and just made them a director or department head without putting it out there. So, the person who lives next road over who's an IT director working in Traverse City, who would love to come out here and be our director, is not going to get a shot at the director position. Your neighbor, who is an IT director, who might want to be IT director for Leon County, did not apply as a technician, because it was a technician job. We've got this contract with SafetyNet, do we have to change it at all? We've got this contract with SafetyNet. That's the way we set it up, and we have a technician on board. So I'm just saying, is this how we're now going to do business? So we're not going to put things out for a bid that we, the way we've always done?
No.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
I think we need to divide this into two pieces. We're getting into staffing discussions as opposed to what really needs to be done. And I, I, I'm not opposed to the IT director role happening, and that that raise would happen to Leana, that we would look at that in the future, and decide if there, we should go out for candidates. I think that's a separate question. But again, that depends on, on a negotiation with, with SafetyNet to say, hey, all right, well, and for the, our administrator's own words, you've already stated, they've made promises, they have kept as part of the contract. So I think we're open to doing that. And I just, we are dividing this into two pieces, because I, I, we got to get through the budget, at least, you know. So I, I think it's appropriate to have a director's level position here with a sophistication of what the systems and things we have, and not be entirely dependent on an outside firm, who that person isn't next year. We can talk about that next year. That's my position.
Is there, is there consensus on the board that we ought to renegotiate the SafetyNet contract and move forward with the director? I, I think that's what Doug has suggested.
Yeah.
I say no. Well, it depends on how we're going to move forward with the director. Are we going to do, are we going to follow our past practice, or are we recreating practice?
I think you're changing horses in the middle of the stream, and something you shouldn't do at this point. I mean, if we want to, from what I've seen, she's, she is overworked, and she's definitely carrying her load plus more. I think people ought to have some more training, and opportunities open, and I believe she probably needs an assistant. So the right thing to do is negotiate, move her to the director, and then look if she needs help.
Wasn't Amber one of the staff, and then moved into a director position?
She was.
Correct. Melinda?
Yeah, they, they did before we had HR, there were, there was a pool of candidates.
But she was-
She then took an interim position, and then decided she wanted it.
She applied for it.
There was a pool.
She applied for the position, though. She didn't just move her up without looking at the whole position. Okay. We'll come back with some recommendations. Thank you.
I would just like to conclude, we have so, so few opportunities to promote and recognize good staff. And if we have those opportunities, I'd, I'd like us to try to make them happen. But that's just me as one commissioner.
Three, four.
Let's, let's move on. We'll get to recommendations on that.
So, I hope all of our wonderful employees that are doing such a great job and going above and beyond come forward for big jump, because I think we've got a lot of them.
So the next position is the executive assistant, which is the executive assistant to the, to the administrator. This is currently a salary position. We don't have any other similar scenarios where the-
Any hourly?
I'm sorry, it's hourly, and the intent is to make it salary. So we don't have any other scenarios, you know, at this point, where either elected officials or, you know, individuals have the administrative assistant to that level. And prior, the executive assistant to the administrator was at the same level as the chiefs. And so, when the chiefs were received an increase, I believe it was in 2022, the only individual that was not included in that was the executive assistant for the administrator. That was before I was hired. So, but I will tell you, with evening meetings, and all the meetings that we've had and everything else, the overtime scenario, which I brought forward when we looked at the budget previously, that overtime budget is increasing, and it will probably be over this year. And by making this individual salary position, we can secure that and allow for more appropriate status. So that would be my recommendation for that.
Might she lose money if there's overtime available?
Does she lose money?
If she went to salary, she wouldn't get paid for all that overtime.
Well, that's why this compensation is set, to bring the level more in line with what the, the other chiefs are, to bring it to a salary position, recognizing that-
Then you don't get overtime, though.
Correct.
Correct.
But it's a way of setting a budget for the organization as well.
There was, and I think this went away, but there was some point when you first brought this to us, there was discussion of maybe handling some of the FOIA things.
That was a thought. I think there was concern expressed by the commissioners, that there's enough of a task to do now, that maybe that's not appropriate, and-
But I would expect, I mean, our concern's important, but you, you all know what you're doing. I'm not saying you shouldn't, but I mean, I guess, so is it your position that there isn't time to do that, then? Is that, because I mean, we have to depend on your input. I don't, I'm not going to follow around all day to see what she's doing, assume she's busy, but, yeah.
She is, and she's been doing a time study, just to be able to kind of, you know, do an analysis of that as well. There are some, there's a great deal of responsibility of things that I didn't realize, all of the things that Laurel's involved in doing, so.
Question answered. Thank you.
Other, other, yes, Commissioner Lutner.
Once again, I, I guess I had, I guess I got a few questions. Number one, when, I really don't want to look at this as comparing chiefs to chiefs. If we have a chief, we have a deputy or a chief, they generally take over, right, for the director? And I don't see your position, I don't see this position as one that's going to take over, well, unless they're in a policy as well. Let's just do it, because we're not going to, all right. So I guess-
I noted sarcasm.
Sorry, and I could not hold. I'm trying really hard. Okay, so, so I'm thinking, I, I'm going to set aside the chief bit, and you're looking at, and this is nothing personal. I love our employees, I'm not anti-employee, but I am pro, pro balanced budget and pro, pro conservative budget. So between these two positions alone, we're already looking at a $16,000 increase for our budget. And that's not 16,000, only for '24. That's 16,000 for '25, plus your 3% adder, and then that is on top of, the next year on top of the next year on top of the next year. Once we raise those up, you know, they, they just never come back down. So again, I'm kind of on the line of, so this is just what you're saying, is this is all work done for the executive secretary, executive assistant? So where is that right now, executive salary-wise, or hourly? What does that come out to generally? What's it has been coming out to?
Executive assistant projected the non-union hourly rate in '24 would be at 29.36 an hour.
Pardon? Repeat this?
29.36 an hour.
Okay. And, so we don't have a 2,000-hour work week?
2,080 hours.
It's not 2,000 hours. We have less. What, how many hours do we have for a work year?
She's a seven-hour, so it's going to be, I've added 18.46.
60,000.
Sounds about right.
18.46, right? 18 and 20 plus, uh, no, 18, 20 plus two days, so it'll be 18-
60,000.
18.44, right? It should say, I'm, it's a 17.
Do you have a wage comparison? So. Just a second, I'm not done.
Okay. Sorry. 18.34, I think.
It's like 54,000, basically, before overtime?
Yeah, 54,000, or 53,846.
54,000 before overtime. Okay, I'm just trying to get all the apples on the table here, we're going to discuss this. With, with only, and this is just looking at the position, okay? On top of that, the very next thing, if we look ahead, is, is 40,000, which I have to, I've got a real issue with too, 40,000 for, for someone to handle parks and rec. If, if this, this position also handled parks and rec as if we had it set up once before, I could be okay with it. But I'm, I'm certainly going to oppose 40,000 for, for a secretary to handle maintenance and parks and rec.
So let me speak to both of the next two. So there's, there's two options on here. The board has spoke numerous times about the need for a facilities manager. And so I certainly agree with that, that we need someone that has an expertise, that could come in and to assist with a lot of the projects that we currently have, that we're handling right now. So if we found somebody as a facilities director that had computer skills, and the ability, let's say, like a Trudy, to be able to, you know, also manage parks and rec under maintenance, which I think that's where it should live, we may not need to invest in a secretary for maintenance and parks and rec, because that person could effectively perhaps manage those things. But we don't know that yet, and we don't know in terms of, we have some temporary employees that could assist with doing minutes for parks and rec. That's currently what's being done.
Mm-hmm.
But there isn't someone right now that is solely responsible for managing the agendas for parks and rec. I mean, actually, to be honest with you, that's something that Laurel is assisting with right now. And it really needs to live somewhere permanently. So from that perspective, I have them in there admittedly for placeholders. If, if, this was part of the scenario that we talked about previously, that if there was a facilities director and we looked at someone externally, then we would need an internal secretary and someone to kind of manage and track those things. So I realize this is difficult, but I'm trying to put in both scenarios, so that you could see. So it's not my recommendation to have both. I think we could accommodate one or the other, but we need to make some decisions on which way the board, you know, would like to see us go. If we went with a consultant, which I've heard is not the direction that several of the board members want to see us go, they want someone on staff, then that would negate the need, I think, for the secretary.
Commissioner Olga, or then Commissioner Rettro.
So, I have to say first, that I'm uncomfortable talking about somebody's salary when you're sitting here, Laurel.
Your job.
I feel that I might be more comfortable to realize just how little we do with the talent. On the other hand, you're sitting in a whole lot of our meetings, which is nice, but you've never done that before, have you? Because it's hours and hours a week. So I'm just looking at your time thing, and if you're sitting in our meeting for hours, might you have time for, I just, I don't understand.
Well, if I can help with that. I've asked Laurel to be here, primarily because she is the only employee that I have, that is, that helps to track when the board sets things for me to do and tasks. I'm not always able to be writing my own minutes and notes and taking those things down. Sometimes, we don't get minutes within a week, and there are expectations that the board has for me to be able to address different things. So it's very helpful to have Laurel here, to be able to give me, as my assistant, some, you know, some tracking on those things.
So that's many, many hours a week. So we have to take that into consideration, that the job has changed.
Admittedly.
Frankly, I wondered how, how you had time, because you're so busy.
And this can't be personally.
And I don't want to be personal.
No, I know, I get it.
It's our only chance to talk about it.
No, this is what I'm saying. So even, even if we have an employee sitting out there, I remember several times sitting across the table from the sheriff in negotiations, I love you, but I can't give you this, you know? And I love Laurel, but is this what was best for the county? I love Leana, but it's just what's best for the county. That's what we have to do. It doesn't really matter who that, it's a position.
Well, and we need to understand what Doug just said.
Okay.
So just briefly, and I don't disagree completely with Commissioner Olga, but the, the IT director role, on a position with our complexity here, and what the, what the risks are to infrastructure and thing, I think it's, I think it's prudent to move forward, assuming that we're going to negotiate some reduction in SafetyNet. As far as the assistant, my understanding, when you said this, that pretty, we're spending this money in overtime right now, anyway. So we're, whether we change the position or not, that the money's being spent one way or another. I mean, I've seen, very seen it now in your head. So it's not like we can save any money by doing this. We either pay overtime, or we set up a position, those two positions. That's, that's what I'm trying to distill on that. I'm going to say on the next three items, all three, as much as I am a, a advocate for a facilities director, and some of these other things, I think in our current budget, we have to make some really hard decisions, and I'm going to probably be a no on all three of the next, in my opinion. But on these two, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we're really spending any more money than what we are going to spend after we change it. We just have some inhouse things. I'd rather have someone who is a county employee, who is tied to this organization, looking after IT, than outside firm who has 50 clients, and we get 1/50 of their interest, which is, I think, what's happening under that contract right now. We got sold a contract, and they don't give us what we asked, and that's something else, I think, that this board, in its entirety, looks at all of these things that we have in some contract, and say, are we getting our time, you know, our time's worth? So that's, I'll go back to my position. I'm okay with the first two, based on the current financial positions, and no on the next three.
Did we have 9,000 in overtime last year?
I'm not sure what the total is as of now. Kath, have you been able to run, since you ran?
Yes, yes.
Year-to-date, this year would probably be.
Executive secretary position, assistant position, how much?
In overtime, because in, in 20, in 2020, it was actual $6,600 in overtime. 2021, 4,500. 2022, 4,300. And year-to-date, through, when I did this rough out, it was August, it was 5,100.
Through August.
Through August.
That's just check dollars?
That's just check dollars.
So that's really seven or eight thousand dollars fully burdened, so far through August.
You would save money.
Yeah.
But what we're hearing then, though, this is, this was pre-you, too. I mean, because I was kind of thinking, since you're new, you know, having that extra support from your executive assistant is important. But Chet was using Laurel quite a bit, too, above those dollars.
Apparently, that was the first time I've seen those numbers.
Yeah, so it sounds like we need to make a decision, yeah. It's, it's been dragging on too long, so.
This is a change, though, because she never used to sit through every meeting.
We, adding to this mix, as we did, hear from the prosecutor about his FOIA person. And, and that's on the list above, I think, the FOIA positions. But I think there's opportunity for the FOIA position to also do some maintenance, support, secretarial, and maybe some parks and recreation, combining that position, because we certainly don't have a full-time position for FOIA. I mean, at times, it gets really tough. But I, I know, I know that currently, we're not spending a 36-hour week, or a 20-hour week. But I, I, I know, I know that currently we're not spending a thirty-six hour week or a twenty-hour weekend FOIA. So I think we need to be creative about the parks and recreation. I think we need to be creative about doing some of the record-keeping for maintenance. But is anybody that hadn't spoken want to speak to this request on the executive assistant? We haven't heard from you, Jamie.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm here today. I'm exhausted, so I'm just following along.
Okay, we should run.
Well, I, I just wonder how things would have went if Laurel wasn't here when Deb came in. I mean, well, you know, that was, that was getting on, getting on the job real quick, and I would be surprised she'd even want this because she could nurse it out and make more money on overtime.
Unless we don't put overtime budget in.
Yeah, that's when you have budget transfers. That, that job has to be done.
Ah, I don't think.
I mean, I, wait a minute, I know we're looking at the budget, but we also have a county to run, okay, and it's gotta run well.
Anybody else on this position? I don't know that we're giving Sean any direction.
Is that the goal of this discussion? Are we supposed to make a firm decision today?
Well, I think at some point we need to start narrowing down.
Start making motions.
Typically, typically you listen, you typically you take it all in.
Yeah.
And you listen to it, and then he could be come back before you're ready, and he goes through the list, and you say, is there four yeses or no's?
When do we do that?
When we're, when you're done listening.
Yeah. Because you may have a, there may be a more compelling story somewhere that changes your, I mean, I think we do have to, like, hear the whole story and, and then say, okay, because, I mean, if we say yes to this definitively, and then we have a more compelling issue from someone else, then we can't say yes to that. So I think we have to listen to the whole story.
And I think we heard about a split, a split board on, on this particular position, but I think we're still open to talking about it.
Yep.
Mr. Olga.
I would just like to say something about the grant writer. At the Northern Michigan Commissioners Association meeting, the five counties who have a grant writer, it's on commission. So they're not paying unless they receive money, and that person gets a portion of what they get. And they have all, they all raved about how much money was brought in that they didn't know existed. But their grant writers were, had a percentage of what they brought in.
I assume there could be a remote position then as well, and not take up office space and.
For sure. Right, they can do it from home.
Yeah.
That is one thing I do.
Okay, thank you.
A little about, because I was in the process of starting my own 501(c)(3) at a certain point. There is ethical issues with, with hiring a grant writer on commission. So I think we, as a board, need to think about that for the full scope of what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's kind of like, as a, as a standard, it's a no-no. And so I, you know, implore you all to kind of do a little bit of, I, it's just, it's not, it's not great practice. For, I mean, like, I, because I wanted to do it, because I was starting a nonprofit from the ground up, and I was interested in it. And all of the reading and the research that I did said ethically, it's a no-no.
Well, let me talk more to those counties then.
Yeah, but I think paying a grant writer is a great investment for the county in general. I mean, I, you know, you see a high ROI and hopefully, and I don't think fifty thousand is, I don't know if that is fifty thousand.
And then Kim.
So to Commissioner Ross's point, yes, we have applied for a grant, a CDPG grant for a grant writer, and the amount that was put into that budget was fifty thousand dollars. If that grant comes through, that would pay for the grant writer, because how it was written is that we have enough of in-kind trade-back, if you will, or in-kind services for the grant right, for the, in the grant, that it would not cost us anything for that position. So this is a placeholder. So the ones that are in red are indeed placeholders. If we don't move forward with them now in this budget, I'm just, these are things that I have heard, that the board has said that they are, feel that we have a need for, and so I just kind of want to reiterate that.
Just to understand that, so like, if you were to receive that grant and we didn't, we didn't put it in our budget, but, you know, four months from now, you know, over January of, we could, we got the money, we're gonna, obviously, we just do an amendment at that time, because it's not, you know, that, we, we don't have to, we don't have to agree to it right now, even though we have a application in for the grant, right? I mean, it doesn't need to be a part of our budget.
Correct. It's my understanding. Trudy's not here, but that is my understanding.
So, all right, well, that makes it easy.
Yep.
I vote that we get the grant.
Granted.
Any support?
I'd just like to comment on the facilities director. Again, you know, since I sit on the Leland Dam. Last week, we had the TV cameras rolling. We had a pretty full crowd of very unhappy people, some unhappy people. I just, I feel immensely the, the liability and the concerns that people have, and I just think that, and I worked in this building. I know what, you know, Jerry does. It's huge. Our parks, I serve on the park and rec. It's huge. We have such great assets. Not having someone who kind of oversees all that does not make sense to me. So I will continue to push for a facilities director and combo it with anything that makes sense, and I'll let everybody smarter than me figure it out, but I'm gonna totally support looking for someone to take the, to take this county forward, so.
I appreciate that. I don't know how many people realize the water and sewer treatment facility that we have out here, the septic field that we have, the towers that we have, the intensity of the 911 service center, and all those things that, you know, we are relying on our current staff to manage those contracts and manage a lot of those things that, there's a lot of concern and intensity, and the dam operation is one of the biggest and, and obviously the most public, based on the events. You know, a thousand-year rain, we've heard everything from a 200-year to a 500-year to a thousand-year rain episode that we had. You know, we're not, we're not insulated from having those types of things happen in the future. And to have, to find someone that has engineering, hydraulic, electrical, mechanical, structural, all those types of things is, is going to be a challenge, but to have someone that has some expertise, like many of the other counties have, that have facilities and asset management, it, it would be a prudent expense. Prudential.
Well, I for, I for one would, would want us to keep looking at that as, as we have openings in that department as well. And I think there's always a potential, when you have openings, to change the job some to meet the current needs. And I, one way I'd like to do is keep that active discussion, but I suspect that we're gonna have vacancies at some point. Gwen?
The incremental salary, employees' salary merit increases all, so that's all of the employees. There are no exceptions.
So the justification for that, there were actually, I'm not sure where this is, Sean.
You don't have to justify it. I just want to make sure everybody gets it.
It, it was intended for all employees. The, the justification for that is we have a 3.2% increase, okay, that's already been put in the budget. The idea was, is I've heard throughout my tenure so far, that there are questions and concerns about wage levels within the county. I know there's a lot of different opinions, that this is, again, put forward as an option, just as a thought process for discussion. If we moved forward with an additional 1.7% increase to that 3-point, or 3.7, so it'd be 1.3 additional, I'm not sure if I'm getting the math right, but the idea is to get the 5% increase. That would help to bring our wage levels up to more competitive. The other side of that is, so that would be an investment of $175,000 to try and bring our wages up to be what some people have said more competitive. There's been another proposal that's in this as well, about an $80,000 wage study. So if we were to do a wage study, just the wage study, would cost approximately $80,000 across the board. So that's money you don't get back. That's $80,000 that you're gonna throw out to do a wage study that other counties have done, so that, that's where that number's coming from. So let me just finish this thought. So that's something that we've heard in terms of a recommendation. We could spend $80,000 and get nothing, or you could look at an increase where everyone is brought up a little bit. So that was the rationale. Again, I'm just giving the board options. I have no, no skin in this. I just want to give the board options so you can see the thought process.
Commissioner.
I've been in a few businesses where we have done wage studies and, oh, I'm gonna get this, this, and it never works out. It's, it's a waste of time. My first one then.
Commissioner Lutner?
I think Commissioner Olga, oh, I'm sorry, I was sure Kramer had her. Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, there's this magical thing. It's so new. It's called the internet. And you can usually look up wages, standard wages for anything on Glassdoor. There's ChatGPT now. You can use AI-powered assistants to find exactly what you're looking for. So I think a wage study is, is just kind of a waste of, of county cash at this point.
Whenever there's.
We got Gwen, and then we got Melinda, and then we got Doug.
All right, go ahead.
For the people newer, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, because there are some real definite screwed-up inequities in our wages. They were never set. They were just, they just kind of happened over the years. And in addition to that, boy, we don't have the money this year. I've been talking about this for two years. We've got so much on our plate. I always support paying our people what they deserve. So I would support giving everyone the step increase they're supposed to get and, and adjusting salaries to be more competitive. Our people have a tough time living here as it is, and costs have gone up. So while I've been talking about a wage study for a long, long time, I'd rather take the money now and, and, and do an adjustment. As long as everyone gets their step increases, everybody gets their fair treatment.
Commissioner Lutner?
I, I'm going to ask of you not to do a mid-year 1.75. Please don't do a mid-year 1.75 raise. Number of reasons. A year ago, you will remember, we, we talked about that. A 1.75 to someone on the lowest end of the scale here is so much less than a person on the high end of the scale here. So who are we really trying to help out here the most? So what this board determined last year, the fairest thing is let's give everyone the same amount, which was a mid-year $750 raise. Now, I did not support that in the same way I won't support that this year, I, any more than the 1.75 mid-year, for a number of reasons. We've got, I think that we do compensate our employees very fairly here. When you look at the entire package here, Leland County is a good employer. We've got good wages. They never have to worry whether their paycheck is going to be there in a couple of weeks, or whether the job is going to be there in a couple of weeks. We have a healthcare plan that no one else has anywhere, and our employees don't pay for it. We have a great retirement. We have 11 paid holidays. We've got vacation days that are unseen by any of my neighbors in, in their work. They're not getting mid-year raises, and, and they're not getting 5% pay increases. So looking at, you know, living in this county, our taxpayers are trying to make it living in this county, and this budget just seems to be getting more and more out of control the more we talk about it. We have a number of employees, and I asked for that number, and I, and I've been trying to scan emails as fast as I can, but we have a great portion of our employees that don't live in this county. They're living outside of this county, and they're, and they're commuting in. That's okay. That's okay. Same reason we've got a lot of people living in this county commuting out of the county. It's just, it's just the way things work here, because we're such a small county. So, so it, so I don't think that we can say, well, look at the cost of living in Leland County. We're gonna pay county employees this, when our poor neighbors are trying to pay the bill, and they're struggling with, with increased taxes. So I'm not going to support this. I don't think it's necessary, and I just ask of you to allow us to take this to negotiations for the county.
I would concur that we have to be careful about talking about wage outside of the negotiation process, because we do have that responsibility, and I, I think everybody here would like to do more. But whether we can do more is, is not clear. So I would just caution us to put this on hold. Doug?
I guess that was my same position right now, not, not that we wouldn't like to see it happen, but, and, and Commissioner Lutner stole some of my thunder. I mean, like I said, when I, when I, when I first got elected here, and then I went to my employer and I said, hey, I get health insurance for the county, and then I looked at what it was, and then I took it back to my insurer, and they said, I can't even give you a price on that. It doesn't exist. He doesn't have a package that looks anything like the health insurance that we have here. So, you know, people work, it's a combination of things. It's your life quality, it's your tension, it's your benefit package, and your salary. So we can't forget all of those things. Not again, that we wouldn't like to see more, but I, I, I think now is not the time, based on, when I look at this list, and, you know, it's like, we've got some big problems to solve. We already have the, the, the base step already in the budget, correct? I mean, there's already a, there's already 3.2 in the budget, and I think we can look at this later. But I, and I also agree, it puts us in a bad bargaining position later on. We're guaranteeing some steps in negotiations that are not gonna come back. So that's where my position is.
Matt, would the board be open to the idea of, for the non-union, from the standpoint that they don't have the same bargaining power that a lot of the other, the unions do?
We have always given non-union exactly what we negotiate with the union. We've always done. That's been our past practice.
So some of the benefits, though, they get buyout on personal days, extra personal days, some of those things the non-union do not get.
Well.
So just, would there be at least a willingness to look at some of those elements? I don't want to use the word, I don't want to use the word commissioner.
It's more complicated than that. It's, it's much more complicated than that. You have some different sets that have negotiated different things based on years of service and when they became an employee here, based on their start dates, et cetera. So it's much more complicated than that. It needs to be discussed in negotiations, all of it.
But, but non-union don't get the opportunity to negotiate. That's my point, so. And maybe this is an opportunity for discussions later on, bring back committees.
I will say, it's discussed in negotiations. We discuss non-union in negotiations.
I think there's an opportunity to talk about committees going forward, because this, these are some of the things that guidance would be very, very helpful. Like in, you know, for, you know, an employee committee or building and grounds committee, committee, as we talk about. So maybe there's some opportunities there for, for additional kind of vetting of things. That would be great.
We've talked through the pending list. I understand, or I hope you've heard us, and you can come back, and do you have any less read, or?
Well, there's several items there we haven't talked about on the pending list, I guess, starting up at sheriff, sheriff, prosecutor, emergency service, selection staffing. Are those all part of the pending list, or?
So can I, maybe I can help, because I, I might, I wanna make sure that I'm, I take blame for, if I cause confusion on some of these. So those ones, the first five, where you were just going, Commissioner Retrov, those are items that were actually raised during the department rounds, and I, having heard nothing, I take them off. I left them on the list. The ones below, so we can go back and talk, just to be fair, I didn't ask anybody to come and speak to those.
Okay.
The, the other thing that was going on in here is, you can tell, some of them are very precise to the fact that they're not rounded to under three million thousands of dollars.
Right.
And so the source of those is what we call a staffing-level analysis. Kathy typically performs those, and we sign. Kathy typically performs those and we sign off. And it is a fully loaded, we could show you the details of how those, those are come up. Those are derived, I'm sorry. In other cases, there's a very broad range that's in there. Given, and honestly, some of the red ones were both what the administrator was talking about. We hadn't approached before, but we haven't also, there, there is no wage study behind 19, 20, 25. Those were just placeholders to put in the, out there to, to come back and talk to. And so the same with the, what you just talked through with the incremental piece. I went out and I, honestly, I did this myself because I didn't want to put anybody in a difficult spot with it. I went out and I grabbed salary and wage line, whatever it is, 702, for the last year. And I, I just, I took 3%, or I'm sorry, 1.75% of that and, and a range of 150 to 200,000. So that was just to get the topic on the table.
So that, so that number wasn't even burdened then, or was it?
No.
It was unburdened.
So that number is much larger if it's burdens.
With all due respect, what I just heard wasn't a discussion around whether if we added 30% to that, that would be acceptable or not. I think the concerns I heard were more conceptual. And so I'm offering all of that because if we, if we want to proceed, we can, with Darcy, I think with Darcy's help, we could come up with a more precise estimate of any of those to help with the conversation. The one that I didn't hear support for honestly was the last one. And so I'm not sure whether a refined number would help you or not, but I, I'm up for that. Again, it was kind of a, I didn't want to put somebody in an awkward spot because honestly, what we would have to do is go through 130 employees and, and, and burden each one individually with assumptions around insurance. And if that's worth it, we will do it. We're not avoiding work, but.
We used to have a calculation, just off the top of our heads, we would use it was like 30% to.
Yeah, I, I think that that, I would love to.
An additional 30%. Yeah, you can.
Because I, I think that my, my past experience with budgeting, we, this is, now we go from back to, this is my fantasy land, Sean's opinion. So it's very difficult to, on a department basis, get into individual situations with family, individual, MERS, what plan on MERS are they qualified? Get into the land of both minutia, but I also, my own opinion is there's some false sense of security or precision when we're just trying to be accurate, you know? And, and so I would love to go kind of where you're going. I just, I've just touched the surface on the, going through this process the first time to know that there's a very wide range. But most, most of our private enterprises would work with a, a loaded factor where we would all say we recognize 30, 35%. I can tell you our range is, is very wide in terms of the percentage of benefits to the salary. And so I would love the chance to work through that because I think we could, to, to your point, we should be able with a, a rent late with our phone to be able to do the math on credit.
I know that we do that in negotiations. If we look at those numbers, we'll say, what if we offer 3%? What's that going to offer? You know, it's, that's going to, what, what, what that costs us? If we offer our employees a 3% or 3.5 or 2%? So we do those calculations at that time. I know we do.
Happy to look into that. I think, I personally think that's a, a good way to budget without getting stuck on some of the.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, what's the math? Least significant digits. I mean, calculating a wild guess at 26 decimal places doesn't make it any more than a wild guess. It gives you a false sense of security. So.
Well, and it also, I think, ties to a person in a personal situation sometimes that you know could change. I would just use myself. Do I bring my family on the plan? Do I stay? Like that cost varies significantly, but should that drive the Board of Commissioners' budget differently?
Can't.
I don't feel like it should, but today's, today that is kind of been the practice to date.
Gwen.
I have a question. So we are talking about negotiations and things we can't determine yet, et cetera, et cetera. This also says salary, people's merit, it's step, yearly step increases, right? Those happen no matter what.
Right. Step increases happen no matter what.
Yeah. The yearly step increases happen no matter what.
Yeah, this, this would be on top of those.
Yes. When I looked at salary merit increases, I was thinking of the steps salary people are on.
So in the base budget, the, the base proposed, budget asked proposed, you should jump in here, but the, this logic behind it incorporates what you just described. So Kathy literally goes through each employee and she's come up with the, what are they, do they step during the year? If yes, step up as well as trying to incorporate then known family situations, where they're at. So I think we're applying, I don't want to, this sounds terrible, a most burden case with, with some positions. And so that logic is in that proposed budget, to your point, to the, to the quantified as a 3.25% salary increase with burdening.
And I'll step in because this is work I'm extremely proud of, and that's in the staffing level portion of your book. Every department that has eight staff, you've got a list of the positions. I know people are, that's a hidden column, because this is about positions for me.
Bingo. Thank you.
So I'm not looking at people, I'm just looking at positions. But to, to Mr. Shaun's position, we, if we have a vacant or a position that's open, you don't have an employee, it's full-time, we can load it heavy, so it's going to be family time. So we budget for the highest one, not the lowest, for that position. If it's a 10-year or a new hire, if you look at some of these pages under the pay rate, you might see two pay rates, or you can see I've incorporated their step to their, on their amnesty date. I've got calendars on these people in these positions. So for that position, in this year, that body will have an increase, and I break it right down to the hour. So that's what we do to give you that goal if you adapt your staff.
Thank you, Kathy.
Is this a good time to take a 10-minute break?
It sure is.
Okay, Sean?
That was going to be my second point.
Take it, take a break. We'll reconvene. It's a reconvene and before we go back to Sean, in front of you, you have a spreadsheet with workshop dates. And we need to schedule, I don't know how many more meetings we need, but at least three, right, Sean?
I wish I had that kind of power. I do, I do think there's a, there, just, I know this isn't my spot to speak, but I think there's, what I was hoping to do was get to a point where everybody could see kind of a horizon in what is left and then ask you what feels right and the sequence of what needs to get wrapped up. And, you know, when I glance through the rest of the list, there are things where there's a sequence involved. And so for a discussion where you may say, I'd rather have that after I talk about it. And so one of the big ones on here, near, near to my heart, replacement angel software, we just heard from Rainin last week. I think there was an intention to have a, maybe a whole or discussion. Do we, is there a sequence on discussing an item like that that's wrapped around something that's not on the calendar yet? So that's the only thought that I had was to make sure that you saw kind of what, at least the things that I'm aware of. And then had a chance to think through the things that maybe felt like we needed more information before making a decision.
Well, Deb, you want to tell us what you've got here?
Okay, well, so if we, if we start looking at dates starting 9/25, because if you see there's a blackout square, that means that that person is not available at all. So if we look at the dates where there are openings, we're looking at, so for example, 9/25. However, you've got, everybody has different, you know, challenges. Some say, you know, Jamie, of course, is focusing on school hours and, and so that's understandable. And then we have some that say they could only do in the afternoon. So we're limited then to a 1 to 3. And then if you look at 2 to 5, now we've just narrowed it down to 1 to 3. For after 2, so we pretty, that, I don't know that the 25th is going to work if you look at all those variables. Does that make sense?
Would you remind me again what blue means?
So blue means that they are only available during those select times. So for example, you know, only available in the PM, which would be 12 to 5. And then, then you're limited by some of the other ones, after 2, 1 to 5, 2 to 5. So, okay. So we're really looking at, if we, if we took all those things into consideration, we have an hour from 2 to 3 on that day.
So this, I have some flexibility there. I mean, what I thought I was asked for is preferred times, which is what I gave. But depending on the exact day, I may be able to be more flexible. But in general, it's just because working in Traverse City, it's easier for me to do a morning or an afternoon than a 10 to 2, which basically is, is basically the whole day for me. So.
And I, and I appreciate that because that, that may come in to be helpful.
And I may be able to push the, that 25th to 1.
Housing action committee is that morning.
I mean, if we started at 1, if we maybe started at 1, we'd have a good two hours if we.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So if that, if that's, you know, we could look at the possibility of a, of a 1 to 3 on the 25th? What about Kama? I'm saying Cam, okay. And, and maybe we do, you know, maybe we do a 1 to 4 or something like that where, you know what I mean? Where there might be some, like there may be an ebb and flow where Kama may need to come in a little bit later. Jamie may need to leave at 3, you know, type thing. So, but 1 to 3 would be the sweet spot. If you look at the 26th, similarly.
Well, I really would rather not do two days in a row.
And understood.
Why does the, why?
So on the 26th, I could be flexible. I could be available anytime.
So we could do again another 1 to 3 or 1 to 4 if that's on the 26th. Well, let's just put one.
What if we did 12 to, oh, you guys are going to eat lunch. Sorry.
We, we can, we can do that earlier. I mean, even if we looked at it 12 to 3 perhaps, does that, if we, we're just looking for optimum right now. We're not going to do, I hear the concern, it's either one or the other, the 25th or the 26th. Similarly, I think that was the scenario for the, the fourth or the fifth. The second is kind of out from the standpoint, you know, again, we try to be conscientious. If somebody cannot make it, then we, then we try to, we're going to try to avoid that. So the fifth or sixth, I'm sorry, fourth or fifth?
26th is pretty darned open now since I've taken. I have something I can cancel.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't put a cross out on it? So we didn't, no, okay. So that is a definite no.
26th, you're not here.
Okay, so that makes it easier. Looks like we're looking at the 25th.
25th.
Oh, the 26th, you're not here, Kama?
I have to turn 65 years old and I have to celebrate.
And you don't think this is an appropriate way to celebrate? I will, I will bring the boys.
So now we're to the fourth and some of the similar, similar challenges.
I could maybe do the, what is, what is the fourth? Let me get there.
Apologize.
You know, you can agree we have at least.
We could conceivably, depending if it's possible.
Oh, Kim has got 130.
10 to 130.
Do you have something before practice that day?
Yeah, I have a 2pm.
Well, how about going till?
And morning doesn't work earlier. Kama, you can get your report. 10?
I could get there at 9:30 maybe, 9:30, 10? What did I say?
Yeah, 10, 10 to 130.
But that is the time that works for you, 10 to 130. So.
Although you said 9:30 would work.
I'd probably get you to 9:30.
So if we did 9:30 to 130.
On what day?
On the fourth.
9:30 to 130.
9:30 to 130?
You know, we, we all don't have to be here. I know we can. There's always going to be people. That's why you have a quorum.
How about, how about in the afternoon on the fifth instead? I mean, is that something that I'm looking at? It just.
I think we have to, and, and we finally found a day we could all do. So instead of, so how about in addition to, what do you mean?
But the.
Because we need more than one day.
The, the fifth, we run into problems 12 to 3, not between 11 and 130. So it would be after 130, and that only leaves 130 to 3. But then we have someone that's 2 to 5. So you're again only looking at an hour. When you, when you, when you really analyze it all down, you've got maybe an hour that day. So I'm not sure the fifth is really optimal. Looks like the fourth, if we could do 9:30 to 130 is good.
The fifth, I could change mine. 130 to 5.
So again, we could potentially have 130 to 3.
Well, I mean, like I said, I mean, maybe you got to.
Maybe I sneak out. I'm like the wacky that I am.
And then I'll recap.
I mean, I said it.
The last one is the sixth. And again, we're dealing with, you know, some are, you know, morning is better. 9 to 3 is open, 12:30 to 3. I don't know how firm.
Let me look.
So we could conceivably do maybe a 12:30 to 3.
That's Friday.
Friday the 6th.
That looks good.
12:30 to 3 and the 6th.
That's really, that was more Doug's, if he had something going on in the afternoon.
I can probably move some stuff. It's just, yeah. I can't think of a better way to end the week.
So if we.
You want to use my sock?
Yes. I reserve the right to borrow those back.
So if we look at what is possible, there were three dates that, on the 25th, from 1 to 3, on the 4th, October 4th, from 9:30 to 1:30. And on the 6th, from 12:30.
To 6pm.
To 3:30. I'm sorry, to 3pm.
3pm or you?
3pm.
What was the 6th?
The 12:30 to 3 in the 6th.
Two and a half hours.
It's hard to get stuff going in two hours or two minutes.
Hey, we're good.
And the 25th would be 1 to 3. So there's three dates, three hours.
I've got four dates.
You can come four days.
Let me, let me do that.
I could not just budget out in a couple hours.
Let me do this one more time. So September 25th. From 1 to 3.
1 to 3.
Got it.
Okay, the 4th.
On October 4th, from 9:30 to 1:30. And on the 6th.
Oh, okay, we're not doing the 5th then.
Correct.
Okay, so I had the 5th in there also.
From 12:30 to 3.
Which I don't recommend three days in a row, so that's probably good then.
Okay, on, on the 4th, let's have the charter and the, the Core County broadband. Proposal for charter on here on the 4th. They'll be ready at that time.
Will you go to, or did that with them or do you want us to?
Yes. That was one of the dates. They said they were available. That worked out.
All right. So we will send a confirmation to everyone, just stating these will be the next dates for our, our budget. We were hoping to get a committee of the whole in there as well, but I think we will just wait. There's nothing that is exceedingly pressing on committee of the whole, other than some policy and the finance. But if we can get the finance committee perhaps together, we might be able to. Good point. I'm sorry, what? When do you come back from vacation?
Uh-oh, she's not.
2 days before the next meeting.
Okay. So that would be the November meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to be done with the budget. We need to be finished. Before I leave.
So the goal is to have the budget discussions completed by the 6th, with the potential of having a budget approved possibly in October, at the October meeting? No? Oh, okay. Hearing?
So, you're shooting for, the way I'm seeing it, is that October gets you to a early November board?
Decision?
Would it be possible, since almost everybody's available, everybody's available? Oh, no, you're not. I was saying, Jamie, if we finally need one more meeting, I wanted to get it scheduled, so that we had it scheduled. But I don't see, I forgot what the black meant there, Jamie.
Yeah, sorry, my, that's a big one. My father-in-law's had an open-heart surgery, so I can't.
That's a biggie.
Oh, on the 9th?
Right, no, that's.
On that Monday before the regular board?
On November?
Yeah, October. Jamie, that's a definite out for you?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Everybody else is available that day. Let's at least pencil that in if we need something and we can find a way to get recommendation or whatever from Kama.
What, do you use that?
About what?
October 9th, in case we need it.
Oh, yeah, I'm open all day. I'll get all packed first. I mean, I don't know what time the surgery is, but.
So you have PM programs, right? Like 1?
1 to.
1 o'clock.
1 to, 1 to 5 if needed, you know?
On the 9th?
Yeah.
Started 1 o'clock, it reads, and we're wide open.
One of the things that, that we have to deal with before we're done is the HVAC system. And tonight is a late edition. I'm asking for the appointment of an ad hoc committee to meet with the engineers and Sean and Deb to see if there is another option and get a price for that. If we had that, then it would make a lot of sense to get that information to us by, before we conclude the budget process. And I'm hoping if we work efficiently, we can do that by, by the 6th or the 9th.
Yeah, it would be so much cheaper just to replace the heat pumps.
Whether we can.
And get a chilling.
Whether we can get that.
Whether we get that information from them that quickly is probably optimistic.
Chilling tower, or whatever you call it.
We've already started the process.
Oh, good.
So that we have all the information for the board and consultant.
You broached that with the consultants?
Well, with, at least, at least getting some general information. It's not a quote, it's not a formal quote, it's just some, working on getting some information.
Okay, cool.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Sean and Kathy, you're back.
So, I'm not quite sure where to go. So, if I, can I summarize the, when I think we went through the staffing levels? I don't think we took anything off the list. And so the question is on the last item with incremental employee salary merit increase, that was the closest to being hearing that now? Is the desire right now to leave that on for consideration?
So which one?
The very last one, incremental employee salary.
I think we need to consider that.
No.
You always vote no.
I'm a no for now.
But we haven't taken anything else off the list yet, have we?
No.
So I don't see why we should.
I don't see why we would do that.
I asked for help with, and I heard Commissioner Wessel, so it makes sense to me if there's a point broad daylight is left from the charter, remaining county discussion. We're going to hear about point, I believe, and so collectively, I'm not trying to dodge that one, but if that one's kind of off the list of things remaining to be discussed, it's to be discussed later. On the remaining items, is there somewhere that you would like to go? Because what I'm searching for, to be selfish, is where I can help, where we can help with additional information that you would be needing on remaining items.
So just, it's just like an open for questions at that point, if I could. I'd like to propose the very first part where you came, just to be clear that we know where we're at. Your analysis on the front page with some of the things you, beginning fund impact, it's your analysis that based on, and again, we know there's a general numbers. I mean, if it's 687, if it's 244, 687, you're in trouble, Sean. I'm just kidding. I mean, we know these are, these are general numbers, but it's reasonable to assume, based on your first thing, that there's a, on those things, there's a 240,000-ish positive impact on our budget that we don't know about.
I think that number, let me re-run it. I know where you're trying to go. I was trying to stick in the general fund impact at various points to help with the decision. That number didn't include some of the items that I added in those rows. I can see the numbers don't look yet. So that would be helpful, like, I can quickly kind of.
I mean, that's helpful in knowing what else we have to spend. And I guess I'm open to other discussions, but when I look at these big things, in my mind, we have to, like, separate those into capital things worth attacking, rather than consider them as a whole budget. I mean, knowing they're there, we have to be conscious of our budget in its entirety. But these are not going to be funded out of operating funds, no matter what we do. I mean, we, I mean, I don't see us making a $1.8 million reduction in the budget to fund the broadband. I mean, we can, we can certainly try to tighten the belt some, which I think we need to do. But in my mind, we got to separate some of these big things out and look at them in another fashion, in any way to move forward. Does that make sense to anyone else here, at least?
Yeah, we're going to have to fund that, that, because we've got, not the 1 point, not only the 1.8, but we've got the rest of the county. So we can't consider taking that out of our budget.
Yeah, and along with that is the HVAC and the North facade and some of these other facility considerations. I mean, I think knowing they're there, we have to be conscious of our budget. But, I mean, operationally, I don't, I don't see a feasible way you fund all that out of just, all right, go back and we needed to take $7 million out of our operational budget somewhere to fund them, so.
To that point, is kind of why I started to separate them, so check my logic. But if those aren't the right group of items, at the top of that page, kind of where you were just poking through, Commissioner Repro with HVAC, heat pump, North facade, and then you add in some of the damn things that have been discussed.
Just about every damn thing has been discussed at this point.
Make sure you get that right, Jen.
The damn things are actually 2023, though. He's got approval in '23, they have.
So can I take them off?
He just hasn't, he actually has approval through board motion to go up for RFPs and to do this. So you could, in essence, take it off, and it's already been discussed, it will be covered when he goes up for RFPs. I haven't attended a damn meeting lately, but they're, they're going to do RFPs to come back to that, and it was discussed that it would be out of contingency in the general fund.
Honestly, he ought to jump on that pretty darn quick, and this is mid-September.
Yeah.
Well, that's my concern, Commissioner Lotner, is that you're getting to the point where you do have a periodicity there with how people.
And it's possible, if you talk, if we, if we talk with Steve again, we can ask where he's at with these RFPs and what he's going to do with this. Because in the past, like, when the sheriff lined his vote, you know, before we got the vote, we added to contingency what we knew might be a project coming forward. So if it's 440 for contingency, we might up it to 500,000, you know? It's just a balancing game, but you know you earmarked money. You know, that's not normal in that budget process, if that makes sense.
Are there items beyond the ones that are up there and do make sense? So I'm happy to, I'd be more than happy from this point to start striking some items if we're comfortable in taking them off the list or calling.
We have thought to. Yeah, okay, we're not going to conceal the asphalt.
And I have a question, just, we have our clean water. Let's put on the gloves, guys.
Wait, 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 we've got 3 people talking right now. When?
I had my hand up after Rex.
Commissioner Ogier, you're wasting your time.
He was Rex forever, I didn't know, so that's fine.
Clean Water has their own budget inside here in the pages.
So it's in there?
It's in there, thank you very much. People are asking. Okay.
Anybody else? I'm sure there'll be 2 hands up, because there were 3 people talking at once, and only 1 is been talking.
Is it, is it reasonable to revise down the, I mean, what's the North facade? Are you reading back from Mission? I mean, it seems like within.
Mission is not doing that, remember? We, we sent out RFPs, and the RFPs have been, they're being drafted, so it still has not, this is, this is the challenge when you, this is, takes a long time to get all this together. So it's at legal counsel right now. We have not even bid those out yet. So that project will not happen most likely this fall. It'll be next spring.
I think it's reasonable that it's not going to be that number, though. I mean, I think from the, the feedback we've gotten, we're keeping a false number in there to begin with.
Do you have one in your, like, if you were going to put range, happy to insert that?
Say 125 to 150?
I would say 125, yeah.
Wow, nice.
Kama?
I guess, you know, we, I never discussed the resealing of the pavement. I mean, is that just a maintenance, that's all it's done?
It is a maintenance. I know that we had got the maintenance I did get, and so that one I pulled up, because I think we, that one has been capitalized in the past. It's a 3, it's a, something that happens every 3 years, we're on the 4th year of a 3-year cycle.
So next year will be the 5th year? So we probably should have a 3-year cycle.
Number 46 will get figured out in the next meeting or 2, right? So.
True. I think 46, 35, and 70 will all be within the next 30 days.
So, reseal the asphalt parking lots?
35.
We just spoke to that. It's in, we're in the 3rd year of what is typically a 3-year cycle. Are we in the 4th year? We're either in the 3rd or 4th, so by next year, we will, like, be potentially in the 5th year of a 3-year, every 3-year. So we probably shouldn't put that out too far from the standpoint that it is.
We're going to save our parking lot.
Well, I heard Kathy say that it'd be helpful to narrow down some of these. And I'm, I think we ought to talk about how we want to do that. I could see us taking just a straw vote on, on some of these, to see where we are, if that was acceptable to everybody. Not a binding vote, it's just an initial thought. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Sean, will you, will you throw it out, and we'll do the quick, and Kathy, you count the votes?
So for now, is it fair to, to the administrators' point, if you, 70, 30, I'm sorry, 70, 46, and, who's going to go on? Is that right, Deb? So if we go, I'm sorry, 39, HVAC, heat pumps, and?
42. 39, 70, 42.
39 and 70, we can't really, there's not enough information.
We don't have enough, no.
So, that fair? So they stay on? Same thing with the North facade until we get a?
We put 125 in there.
We probably could reduce that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, I don't want to jump ahead on the lower level bill that. I know that's a discussion item, unless we want to go there right now. But on the 2 damn items, is there consensus to pull off or to be clear, they're going to be items?
They don't have to be out there.
I sit on the damn authority, and I couldn't even tell you a definitive answer, to be honest. We don't, we definitely want to do something with the hydraulics. We had talked about a process. And I believe it's in Steve Christensen's court to make those RFPs or just purchase them. But I don't know where he is at after last week.
But it is, it is this year's budget, not next, so it doesn't need to be out here.
Okay.
We're assuming those are getting done in '23, correct? Okay.
Good. Okay, and then the reseal asphalt parking lot?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, keep it, Linda? I agree with that. I mean, you know, that's where penny wise and pound foolish, you'll be making bigger repairs.
And then the only other one, I believe, is exterior security cameras?
Yes, possibly MMRMA funding?
So that's a really great point. One of the things I've struggled with is items that, and I believe this came earlier with the, you took the straw vote on, you voted for a grant for a grant, which I love. On some of these, if, I don't know how we've handled in the past, but is there a condition precedent on revenue from a grant? I mean, is that, do we leave items on where we would say, I believe that there's a grant eligible? I don't want to spend it without a grant, or?
So you run into a situation with this one, because MMRMA is going to be a general fund expense, and it's going to be a general fund income. So when you're looking at security cameras, depending on, I'm sure Evan would probably say that that's going to be a capitalized expense for 50K, that normally would come out of your 470. So the fund 470, which has its own checking account, but your money's going to be in the general fund. So I would say if you're looking on a budget standpoint to look maybe into grant, a grant opportunity, then you would take this off the budget for now, look into the grant opportunity. If the grant doesn't come out, then you're looking at how are we going to fund that? Because the 470 is only funded either by DTR or general fund.
So I guess I'm with you, all the way up to the look, and if we leave it out of the budget, we don't have to think about how we're going to fund it at all.
Correct.
I mean, this, to me, is a perfect spot for a budget amendment, okay? We'd like to do it. I'm not fond of all the other ones we do, but this one makes sense. But that's a perfect thing. I mean, pursue the grant, we get the grant, make the amendment, recognize the revenue and expense. But then we're not committed to it in a budget.
Can I paraphrase? We would like to, following your logic, it would be helpful to keep a list of items that we are interested in. That doesn't mean necessarily, but there's still, there's ongoing interest in that it's dependent on.
Outside financing.
Right. Okay. So not in the budget, we'll keep a little side list and.
Yes. Can we put them all on that list?
Did anybody, not that it's any of my business, did anybody ever ask MMRMA about the facade?
They were here and they assessed it, but we didn't.
You know, like filing a claim, you know what I mean? I mean, you're, it's crumbling, you know what I mean? I, I just hadn't thought that, did we ever, I don't know if we ever.
I suppose, Jen, it's been going on so long, I would have assumed that we would have, but maybe that's a wrong assumption on my part. They were here and they looked at it.
Yeah.
But I can certainly go back and ask the question.
Laurel, have we ever filed a claim or asked him about a claim on that, even under check?
Like, there was a weather event that, like, recently, we had it under storm a few weeks back. And it took out a UPS, and, you know, watching the mechanism. So we did call, and we filed a claim, and we, it was like a $1,000 debt for an island porch. And we got a renegotiation for those 2 things.
It'd be worth looking into, so.
Yeah.
We'll let you know by, we'll let you know by the next budget.
Yeah, it saves you money, you know? If it's a claim, I mean, we're self-insured, so it's not like at your house, when you have the tree fall, it's best to take it off yourself, so that your insurance doesn't go up, you know? Where this is if it's something that was related to the structure.
Why didn't you check into that before, Jen?
You know what, I can only think of so many things.
Me too!
I turn to you. I just keep thinking Melinda wants to save money.
Oh, right. I understand.
So Sean, does that...
I truly meant that in just humor.
No.
And I did see that in claims and accounts. It was a lightning strike over there.
Trying to think, are there any other things that are like that that we've talked about that are...
Those are helpful because I think most folks are familiar with those, so we'll take a couple off, make a revision.
Got more to do.
If I could just add one more thing, the common denominator is they're looking at all the during the year. This is a multi-year event.
Yeah. It may not, but we'll, but we should look into.
But a, a block could fall on somebody's head, too. We don't want that.
That's why there's caution tape out there right now.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Maybe if, um, I appreciate those items, I captured those, I'm going to make a change. I'll, I'll update this after the meeting on the left, but I can use her, so happy to, if I captured that one, you can correct me. Maybe, let me take a swing to the third page.
Come back.
And if I can get that one, I didn't know what else to call it, so there's nothing specific I would be able to talk about. And in here, this would help, I mean, maybe help you is, one of the items, the third one down there, leaving an upcoming family for maybe...
You do have a job.
So that, what we have currently, and I put these kind of three in order, or some help with if we want to have this discussion. I believe there was a, maybe some informal discussions online with, with that department that resulted in maybe expectations, like we've got a letter from Sharon Greenberg and maybe recommending we take a look at putting some things together under the implement direction. But what we have in the budget today, and that item 29, is in the Board of Commissioners' budget, there's a substance abuse line item for $30,000. Historically, I can't tell you historically, this year I believe that that is gone exclusively to lift. Is that fair, Kathy?
Yes.
And so, there's a, there's a, I think there's a consideration there and a continuation question. In addition to that, we have a substance abuse line in the Department 525631, which under kind of our approach, at least till now, we have a budget item under there that has $57,000 and $57,500. We also collect a marijuana tax, which is in the budget right now for $52,000. Those substance, and I, I only, maybe unfair for me to group them, I'm just logically, those are related to common being, and I think there's questions with that. I'm not sure, I'm, I think I just told you everything I know about them. So if there's a desire to discuss, I'd be happy.
I think we also need to add the opioid settlement.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd. That, that one is actually here, but I pushed it down just because it's actually the very last line on this page. We, and, and the quality with this one is, with us creating Fund 284 in the middle of this year, there, there are, there is a revenue and expense line related to that. I separated it only because of, it's, there is a fund balance and it's outside of the general fund, but we could group that together logically to discuss. So that is out there, and I believe the budget for revenue and expense placeholders, $10,800 for next year.
I just wanted to confirm, if you guys could pull up, what, what was the request from Sharon? Wasn't it like 130,000?
It is.
So the request is in essence for those three components that Sean just went over, the substance abuse, the marijuana, and the, the prior to the...
There's marijuana, that's revenue, correct? Okay, so I just need to make one correction. So the 52563157, that is actually tied to a revenue that comes in and is ours. I believe the 57 that...
We don't, we don't know what your numbers mean.
Okay, I'm sorry. So where it says...
I have number 29.
Yep, so it says just below number 29 N slash A. So substance abuse department 525631, this placeholder where it says discussion only, this 57.5 is just a oops, and this is your, uh, COBOL tax.
That's the Northern Michigan issue.
Yep, your Northern Michigan. What he means here is this is the C3 grant that is under the Board of Commissioners, but it's the same amount of money. So under the board, Lyft and you have an agreement on what's called the C3 grant. And I think Sharon wants the C3 grant, the 30,000 plus hers, and your, your opioid money.
So wait a minute, she wants for...
Basically, we wouldn't be using Lyft, I'm not sure, I, what, your, that, Deb has a little bit more, we, we had a, just a roundtable discussion, but I don't know much about it.
The C3 is a pass-through.
Yeah, the C3 is a grant.
It's the opioid, it's the, it's the, it's a, it's a...
It's $50,000.
Are you putting in the liquor tax?
Nope.
Nope. It's a pass-through that goes to who, right? I just need to know where.
Lyft.
So it goes straight to Lyft?
Yes.
As well as then the $30,000 that's listed on here?
In your board budget.
In the board budget is, also goes to Lyft. And that was money that was allocated by the board, I think in 2022, started...
Or 21, maybe?
Twenty-one, maybe?
Maybe before that.
And so it's just kind of been every year, but there was a recommendation to combine what Sharon is doing and Lyft into one organization, and the request was a unified request of like 110, 120, could be more. That's what I was just trying to...
Yeah, I think it's in the marriage.
Lyft is going to join Catholic...
Correct.
Human Services.
Right.
So then, so how does that affect...
I think that's Sharon's, I think there's the connection there between Catholic Human Services and, and coordinating Lyft in with that, and they would be the entity that kind of coordinates that C3 grant going forward. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I remember that meeting, because I've had through that meeting with you.
Okay, yeah.
And, um, the C3 is a pass-through. It's, they are subrecipients. Lyft is, Jen, come on.
Yep.
Lyft is a subrecipient. The money comes in, they, well, they invoice us, we pay them, and then we're reimbursed.
So you're calling, so you're...
That's C3, that's a C3 grant, and that's 57,000. We're just a pass-through.
That's 57, okay.
And Miss Reender, Reender, she has thought that Catholic Human Services could take over the administration of that and become a pass-through entity and get us out of the C3 business.
That's good.
Because it's just an MMRMA. So, I think that's what I remember from that meeting. Then, Family Coordinating Council understands the Lyft group and what they're doing, and they do tend to focus on the demographic in the county, through schools and whatnot, where Family Coordinating Council, and I'm very patient, or discussion, is more of a far-reaching, cradle-to-brave approach to touch all the lives in the county, cradle-to-brave, and that they would, if they were in charge of these budget dollars, Lyft could come to them and get their funding. Sorry, am I...
No, you're doing great. I'm just, I'm curious then, so Lyft is separate than the substance abuse and prevention?
Yes.
I thought so.
We contract with them.
Okay, so then where, if, if this is substance abuse and prevention, I'm not sure how this is functioning.
We haven't, we haven't put it anywhere. That's why, that's why it's under this, I would call it miscellaneous portion, because you've got 30,000 in your board budget for substance abuse, but we have a contract with Lyft that that money goes there, right? Then they applied and got a C3 grant, 57,000 with the feds, where we reimburse them to also administer something else via a subrecipient agreement.
Lyft at that pass-through.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's Lyft for 30,000 here, Lyft for 57,000 here. Now Sharon would like to take that pot and take the 30, I think, and your, and your 57, and your opioid money, and some of your marijuana.
Is there marijuana money?
There is, but we get to keep that because we have the Northport, the Northport joint.
Next question.
And the opioid money is not going to be regular money.
Commissioner Kramer?
Okay, just to say, I, under, it's Leland for teens, or I don't know if full acronym, right?
Yep.
Investment for teens?
Yes.
Do, then will we have any funding for substance abuse and prevention?
They want you to run through Catholic Human Services, I believe, is that?
That's what they will do.
Is that what, you, you got the just of that, Deb?
Yeah, it, everything would be run through Family Coordinating Council and then... Do we know what they're doing?
Uh, let me, the Catholic Social Services are just going to serve as their fiscal agent, I believe, and so they're just going to keep the books. They're not going to provide the services.
And do the same thing we do.
Yeah.
Just do some paperwork for them, you know?
And anything they want to do has to go through the SUD Board and get approved. So Sharon takes things to the SUD, takes a program to the SUD Board and accesses some of this, there's more money at the SUD Board, but some of that's got to be here because that's the COBOL money, that's the liquor tax, or is a liquor tax in addition to...
This, actually, your help made me feel a lot as disconnected because I...
Well, good, you cue me in then, because I...
So what I had to do was create a score sheet for myself of where I believe there are revenue items from, and also where there are expenditures this year. To Jen's point, there are contracts, I don't know whether the contracts extend or how far they extend and what it's committed to, but my, my biggest question was, if this is a subject that we want to discuss, I would love to put my, I've shared my scorecard with Jen and the Treasurer's Group, and just to make sure I have, have it as, as right as possible, but does this warrant, like, as a subject, a discussion you want to have?
You want to have Sharon here?
That's one.
Yeah.
Along with the Lyft, along with the Lyft Director, I think.
The Lyft and, just, is Sharon in charge of...
Rebecca and Sharon both here.
Yeah, Sharon's in a lot of, a couple of these, I, I've been to the Coordinating Council, and we have Women's Resource Center, we got Catholic, we got Christian neighbors, women's, I mean, it's quite complex, and I think maybe Sharon could pull it together a little bit better, because personally, I'm not impressed with part of it.
My concern is...
Yes, I have concerns as well.
We, we spent quite a bit of time as a commission, and the community has supporting Lyft in that program, and they're expanding to Leland and Northport and doing some pretty good things. I want to make sure that, that we know that they're supportive of what Sharon's proposing.
I would really like to make sure that we get funding that really does help Leland County with actual substance abuse and not, I mean, I think the teen program's great and laying the foundation for healthy futures, but I really think we need to focus on effective drug substance abuse programming.
If we can ever measure what we do.
Your scorecard will help sort out the money that's been chasing a circle here for the last fifteen minutes or so to understand if we say yes to something, what really is the financial, because right now, I'm going to have to tell you, I don't, I don't know if I said yes to something, whether that means we're spending money, getting money, or nothing.
Or even, right.
Or even, I don't know.
I find one of those that I do not feel comfortable enough with, I don't understand it, I'd love to, so, please, Jen, and it, what I've sent, and I've asked the Treasurer for the same, because we say things, and I want to make sure that the words we use, there isn't, you asked about marijuana tax, for example, there is a, I understand how that works, there is, there are actually two line items there, there's an excise tax and there's a, which has like $15 in it.
Yep.
And then rate majority, which I believe is driven by the number of dispensaries, which is...
One.
Um, in Leland, but I don't have anything tab next to that revenue line item, it sits as a revenue in the general fund, for example, but I would love to lay these all out. I don't know if that, from a discussion standpoint, I have what Sharon initially proposed in writing, I, I'm struggling with aligning it to the pieces we just walked through, but I, I can piece that back together and send it out after the meeting is done.
It's figure-outable.
It is.
So I just want to, it further gets convoluted because the state has issued mandates in regards to how opioid funds are to be managed. So I think we also need to back up and look at what the requirements are for the funds that we've received from the opioid and how did those requirements meet any of these other options? So I will make sure that we have a summary of that.
Sheriff Pease.
I did tell you, you studied a little bit, pretty much none of them apply to us, they would all apply to almost all of the programs we were currently discussing.
Okay. So there you go, that's a summary.
Right.
Probably only way to get through it. As appropriate.
Can we send it for TNT, though?
No.
Yeah, we did think of that.
What's TNT?
TNT.
Traverse Narcotics team.
Feels better individually.
Okay, bummer.
When?
So the marijuana tax that we get, how much, how much are we getting?
We have an indication of 53,000.
52,000.
So that should all go to programs, too. We've kind of...
Do we have to?
Are we doing that?
No, no.
Well, that's what the money is from, so I think it should, that's a, that's a good source of revenue for our programs to help people with substance abuse. Don't you?
It's a good theory, I don't think it's mandated, and we don't spend gasoline tax exclusively on roads, and we have a lot of tax sources we don't direct exclusively towards the source of the taxes, so. I agree with you in concept, I just don't know that it's a...
But we don't have enough, if we could get some regular additional funding for substance abuse programs, that's pretty golden.
Sure.
Commissioner Lutner?
Um, going down to, a little further down, we've got a new maintenance vehicle. We just bought a pickup a couple of years ago, so what is this one for?
That one is a quote that our maintenance director got under the Michigan program. He's suggesting we consider, this would be the second truck, I think, I don't think that's a second one.
Before we do the vehicle, can we just bring closure to the conversation we just had? I mean, we've got the opioid and the substance abuse...
I'm sorry, I could, I could see no closure anywhere near in the future, so I kind of moved on.
I think there is. Can we schedule, schedule one of our sessions and have our people here and opioid settlement rules here and, and look at that and become informed?
I agree, along with, like, the number chase, the cheat sheet and all the stuff.
Yeah, I would, I would like to examine where substance abuse and prevention dollars
are going and, like, the actual programming that is being presented through that.
That's what that, we'll get all that, right?
We get that as a...
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to see where it's all gone.
If I may interject, in your narrative, in fact, your book, page 67 through 75, is the document produced by Sharon Greenberg regarding this...
Thank you.
...resolution.
What number?
Page 67 through 75, and we were just marrying in the back of your book. She could go, there was a synopsis, like, this is a synopsis, like, we had with her, the Lyft people, Mrs. Tim...
Rebecca?
Yeah, Rebecca, they were there. I can tell you, I think that they have a good program. They are very frustrated with county government and how it works with them getting through the process.
Information, yes.
And they feel, I don't want to say completely, but they felt administratively, it would be easier for them to work with Family Coordinating Council if we would put our funding toward Family Coordinating Council, they would be the gatekeeper, and Lyft would be working with them rather than...
So we'll have a session on that and, and read some decisions, and Melinda, you're on with vehicles.
Okay.
Um, well, we just bought, we haven't really had any discussion about adding a second new maintenance vehicle, we just, we just replaced one two years ago, so that would
So that would be fifty-two thousand we'd strike.
I don't know of any, is there like a narrative of why, do we know?
So what do you want to strike?
Number six.
Why would we need two vehicles, Deb?
I have no justification to be able to support that.
Three, Dwayne Scott. One, that did you have is replace the old truck. Only on the year, but I want to say it's an old nine or a twelve.
Yeah, vehicle at the back of your book.
High mileage and rusting out. Didn't want to get to the point where he was with his truck, which is replaced where you were putting two, three, four thousand dollars in there at a time. First is replaced. Jerry was carrying the quote, he didn't get it, he's proud, but he didn't get it for a long time. That is replaced. There are three trucks, all plow, all winter, whether it's here, Park, or Powers, you need to replace them for the oldest of three.
And all three plow trucks run all winter?
Okay, but rust isn't a problem. How many miles are on that vehicle?
It's on the last page. I got it. It's your last page of your book.
Okay.
Where's the last mileage on, is it Dwayne's truck?
Uh, yes.
Seventy-four thousand five eighty-six.
That is not a mile. That truck stays on this campus per se. Most of them. Say, um, so Doug's parents, hope it's not the mileage as much as the use. That is a primary plow truck here.
But I think it could wait a year. We could get another year out of it. Easily at seventy-six, or seventy-four thousand.
Well, if he orders it, it takes a year.
We wouldn't have to pay for.
I like it.
Right, Jim, takes a year to get a truck.
So, but it still would have to be in the twenty-four budget, or are you saying we put it in the twenty-five budget? That's what I'm saying.
We put his truck in two budgets and it still didn't come. We had it in twenty-two, we had it in twenty-three.
So I'm okay with the twenty, you know.
Probably run into the NSD truck, we ordered it in twenty-two, didn't come. And then rolled it over, mile here, price went up seven grand, we come back.
Yep. Not going to get away from that.
Couldn't get it for the price that we approved. Even the current climate of construction and everything, probably not going to move that.
Well, Melinda has recommended that come off. Anybody else?
I'd like to just know more about the truck. I mean, I'm looking at that price, just a three-quarter ton four-by-four, regular cab?
Yes, I've seen the quote, I mean, it's.
And this quote, this quote is for the state that's supposed to be saving ten thousand dollars a vehicle?
Yes.
That's not saving ten thousand dollars a vehicle.
I know it's important, but it's not the lights and the plow package, the only thing that has a plow, which Jerry uses the old, recycles, uses the old plow.
Could we bring Jerry or that in and spend five minutes on that as a session?
Probably should.
Okay. Okay, everybody?
Yep.
And I know Commissioner Wessel, did you want to, are we?
We're scheduled to be done at five. If everybody's fine with that, I'm willing to extend it, but I think we've got two more meetings.
This is helpful. I was hoping to hit things and bring back, so we've got a couple in what we just talked about. I think the, one of the other items, let me hit item thirteen that's, we're on the same list. So what we have done is assumed in the partisan rec case that there is CapEx, capital expenditure, sorry, next year consistent with twenty-twenty-two. That number's fifty-five thousand dollars. We have a long list, if you go back to my initial list of other things in additions that, you know, that Casey has given us. They haven't had their opportunity to discuss those. I don't know whether there's a, I put zero in this because there's already, in effect, if you look in the little footnote to the right, there's already fifty-five thousand in the first round of the proposed budget related to partisan rec.
What he's saying is that this is minimal. It could easily be a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. There's that many projects backing up.
Correct. Can you go back to my initial five-page list and look at the ones that were partisan rec? It is a long list of things, the narrative, I believe.
I don't think this is the year to exceed the fifty-five.
It's actually in page four of my initial five-page list. And the items that were in there were pole settlers, kids' overhares, forty thousand per annum, valid tires. Miles generally, in addition to getting twenty thousand dollar ask for special, we're passing them through straight out. So there's, there were close to two hundred thousand dollars in additional items in there to, in your locker, it's like.
I don't see it. I don't know, that's just me, but.
To be best. The other items that we haven't specifically discussed, but they are in that first proposed budget, we traditionally keep a contingency on those expenses. So that line item, I think we may have touched this the very first time we ran through, the spotlights, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, that's consistent with twenty-twenty-two. And the other item in there is the unfunded liability contribution in excess of what's required for MERS. And that against fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand consistent with twenty-two. So I just wanted to make sure that surfaced all those items.
Those three, all three of those items are in our current budget as proposed, correct?
Correct.
That's our last two. Which three were those, I'm sorry?
The contingency partisan rec and MERS.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, I would say leave those in, yep.
The only other item we have not hit on this is just an awareness item. So right now, related to the IT Fund six-thirty-six data processing is, the logic there right now is we lifted twenty-twenty-two and we're assuming that is an appropriate budget for twenty-twenty-three. I think the, this is an item that's been on in front of the board in a standard meeting for twenty, for forty, that's the forty thousand dollar item, number seventy-one, which is, I just think of it as the annual computer refresh allow. I actually probably could show that it's already included because there's a contingency line item in that budget that I believe that you could call that out under. But I just wanted to surface that because I don't think we've specifically covered that anywhere else yet.
Well, we're in this, I mean, we're on, not there, but the wage study, was it kind of the consensus that?
I got the consensus to take that out.
I just want to make sure that, I think that's the, so that one could be.
Yeah.
If we were to consider the financial software, would you even be interested?
Yes. So do we, this is.
Good time to wrap it up.
Yeah, Jerry popped in, I assumed that.
Oh, Jerry, look at that. Jerry heard the word truck.
I don't know. Well, I do, I do want to answer your question because I think that, that's, Raymond had made a very strong case for replacing financial software. So I think whichever direction we go, it's been in the budget for multiple years for Harris. You know, whichever direction, I think that that's going to be something that.
All for goods.
I'll be a strong advocate for that, so.
Yes. So let's have that as one of the sessions. We need a software review.
The only situation with that is you just have the one bid. So if you're going to do something, you'd have to bid three.
Well, I guess what I'd like to talk about on that is maybe. I don't know whether, I think that is what I'd love to discuss is, do we think of this as a general ledger, that we're going to go out and talk about multiple general ledgers? Or is this truly an integrated system that is what we would call ERP, it's kind of end-to-end? And if that's the case, I don't know that there's, if we have that discussion, I think we should, we need to go back and think about all the other components of, from building safety, treasury, where we run currently a version of, we've got pieces of that ERP system, would we consider replacing those? So to me, before we get into the bid discussion, there's a, what is it discussion?
Definition.
Definition. And I'd be glad, like, I think that's worth a conversation.
And I think, I mean, if I read Raymond James, if we were to do it, we should look strongly at the ERP solution that, I mean, as.
So I can share, I've spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks doing what I can do to collect some new diligence, hopefully to prepare for that, including visiting and talking to neighboring counties and what that integration component means to them, whether that's a kind of a big thing or is there, is there something real there? So I'd be glad to talk for that. I'd rather hear Jerry talk about the drug.
Yep, we'll call him. Jerry, we're scheduled, you're the last thing on our list because we're going to be done at five.
Five minutes. So we have, I have a question for you. If you need a new truck, should we order it this year expecting to get it in twenty-twenty-five? Can you get through twenty-twenty-four?
Can you get through twenty-twenty-four?
So.
The rust is the big, one of the biggest issues right now with that truck, I don't know why. But resale, we saw it already. We've been doing a very good.
Is there mechanical difficulties with it right now inside of the rust? It's running okay? It's?
It's running okay. It's just the, the rusting is really bothersome to me in places that, you know, Seven didn't have. And I have a new truck that I got here, though, it's, I had that undercoated. So I'm looking longevity in that. Cost-wise, I don't have much to answer. I wasn't prepared for that for resale, I traded in. The ideal price for a new one is fifty-one, fifty-two at this point in time. And I don't think I'd much to give the price from this company, but I just think one, if you want to do the investment now, we'll start.
Well, we would actually, we wouldn't have to pay for it until it came in. So worst-case scenario for us budget-wise is that it comes in in twenty-twenty-four. I guess then we would have to try and pull out of contingency or something at that point, or motor pool if we have it. Okay.
This is a clean dress. So I think it's salt bills. This probably not get salted, though, hell, they say this is a big plow, he's probably picking up all that salt. Unless rusting.
You're telling me the road up here gets salted a fair amount? I'm just kidding. Being sarcastic.
And also, the worst miles to put on a truck is a plow truck. And they have seventy thousand forward, but it's ten thousand back.
Yep.
So it's really tough on a plow truck, transmissions.
Well, it's harder on automatics. You're going to get a stick? Is that an automatic?
They don't make sticks hard anymore.
You have to order them specially.
Jen, you have to make sure everyone can drive a stick.
So is there, is there consensus to leave it on for now?
For now. For now.
Leave it on for now?
Leave it on for now.
So leave it on, leave it on means Jerry gives permission to order it. But when it comes in, it'll come from contingency in twenty-twenty-five.
Leave it on means we're not done with it yet.
We didn't say no to it.
Ask Melinda.
Still, still under advisement.
There's a prayer, like, leave it in there.
There's a prayer and a promise.
I got it.
Okay, before we, before we leave, we want to make sure that you have, thank you, Jerry, that you have from us what you need for the next meeting.
So, so I had a couple of cleanup items. I will, I believe I owe you two things, which is a payout, send it around. One is an update of this status tracker with what we, we kind of kicked to the side, up to the, the items were changed and out. The other thing is I owe a scorecard on substance abuse. And again, making this up as I go, so hopefully make sure I get the answer for that. With those two things, we'll look to schedule a couple of meetings, including Sharon, one that we want to talk about Raymond and one where, the third one, we got to make, because we just got Jerry and Rob and, yeah, to make sure Wessel is.
That is scheduled, but that won't be the next meeting. It'll be.
The night.
That's Rob and, and it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
It'll be the fourth.
Almost four hundred thousand.
Okay. Anything else? We, thank you, Sean, thank you, Kathy, thank you, Jen, thank you, Deb. At this time, we have public comment. If anybody would like to make public comment. Thank you to our other sheriff for being here. Thank you. Thank you for, HR Director for being here. Any Commissioner comments?
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to, Sean and Kathy, for the handouts, easy to follow.
I know you.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Motion to adjourn?